Good. Welcome everyone. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of January 8th, 2019. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Happy New Year. Wishing you all a healthy, especially healthy, and happy 2019. Steve, for the folks at home, as always, I have the agenda, so they can take a look at some of the items we'll be discussing this evening to see how long they'd like to hang on. Okay, very good. Thank you, Steve. And as always, the first meeting of the year, we start out with the supervisor's report, which I'll also put on the screen for the folks at home. There we go. Okay, very good. So this is for the period ending December 1st, December 31st, rather, 2018, the month. We started the period with an opening balance of $4,615,791. We had receipts of $1,979,492, dispersments of 1.421, leaving and ending balance of $5,173,883. And Harry, you will always ask about the CPF.
I already memorized it.
Okay. Very good. Well, we just received the check yesterday for the December period. It was $22,000 in change. We had a very strong year for the Community Preservation Fund, especially with that large Hudson River Estate transacting. We now have a balance of $1.3 million in change in the Community Preservation Fund.
We haven't used any of that in quite a while, have we?
Been a while. And we expect, perhaps, to be doing some appropriation or consideration of it for the trail project coming up. Winnicky?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. That's the supervisor's report. Is there a motion to accept it? Is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. We are going to have a variance report at our second meeting, and we'd like to include some of the last-minute December expenses in that report. So we'll look for that as well. At this time, we can take the clerk's report. Sue?
Town Clerk Monthly Report for December of 2018. Total local shares remitted to supervisor's town revenue, Amount remitted to New York Ag and Markets for their spade and gutter program, $72. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $135. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Racing and Wagering, $30. Amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $33.06, for a total of $2,101.75. In pursuant to Section 27, sub-1 of the town law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann Town Clerk, during the period stated above in connection with my office. And I also have two abstracts tonight. So these are vouchers that were paid in November of 2018, vouchers 24118 through 24237, for a total abstract of $310,081.69. And I hereby certify that the vouchers numbered were processed in the month of November, and they're an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board. So have December of 2018, it is vouchers 24238 through 24311. Total abstract, $79,921.55. And I certify that the above vouchers for the month of December are an accurate reporting of the abstract approved for payment by the town board. And that's it.
Very good, Sue. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, we just have a few announcements this evening. They relate to MLK Weekend. Saturday, January 19th, I think we've mentioned before, we're having our e-waste recycling event. That's 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and that's at the Town Recycle Yard on Firehouse Lane. And some of the things that are allowable are televisions, monitors, computers, keyboards, small-scale servers, fax machines, scanners, printers. Anything electronic is something that would be considered for receipt. There are some fees we want to let you know. Any screen that's up to 20 inches is $10. $20 for any screen up to 40 inches, and $30 for a screen that's 41 inches or larger. We also take AC units, dehumidifiers, and refrigerators, and the cost of that is $15. In addition, on that weekend, on Monday, the CAC is also sponsoring Red Hook's First Repair Cafe, which will be held at the community center. That's Monday, January 21st, from 11:30 to 2:30 p.m. And Sarah, did you want to describe some of the things that folks could bring there to get repaired?
Sure. So this is a first time, hopefully a year-round, maybe quarterly or something like that event. But we'll be doing, I think there's like electrician lamp kind of repair. There will be somebody doing some sewing, basic sewing-type repairs. And the basic idea is you bring your item that you're hoping to be repaired, and it might not be repaired right there in front of you that day, but hopefully you're going to get some tips on how to repair it yourself, or they may be able to repair it, or they might be able to point you in the right direction for a resource. So it's going to be really fun and interesting and very community-oriented. There will be some people making reusable bags out of plastic bags, I think, and all kinds of, lots of crafts, and it's not just repairs, it's all kinds of interesting community activities, so.
11:30 to 2:30 on the 21st.
At the community center. And there's a lot out there on Facebook about it. I think more things are being added every day, so.
Great. Thank you very much, and thanks to all the volunteers who are doing that. Hopefully it'll be a success and something that will continue. The Association of Town writes to us to let us know the annual conference is being held in February 17th to 20th in New York City for the folks at home. Many of us go down there to receive classes, more training for the job that you hired us to do. And so there's a list of proposed classes that you can peruse as well. New York State Department of Transportation has given us both some good news and some bad news. The good news is they rather quickly responded to our request to lower the speed limit on Butts Corners Road. That's the area from Pitcher Lane to 9G. We requested a lowering from 55 to 45 for the appropriate speed that they determined. And so there is a letter here from them saying that they will be granting that request, so we should look for that change to be made in the springtime and for signs to go in when weather permits. At the same time, rather surprisingly, DOT has responded, not in writing, but they have to me on the phone, that they are not going to grant our request to lower the speed limit in the Forest Park subdivision. That speed limit currently is 35 miles per hour, and they have made an initial decision that they are not going to lower it, so we're going to keep after them because we think they've made an inappropriate decision for that neighborhood. Okay, any other announcements? Does anyone have?
I guess I should really just announce that the tax bills will be mailed out next week. If you do not receive yours, and you're supposed to, please give me a call. It's very easy to get you another copy. If you receive it, and your bank is supposed to get it, please forward it on to them immediately. And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Sue.
Maybe we can just do our public service announcement about signing up for notifications on our website. You just go to redhook.org. Right at the top is a link for notify me, and there you can sign up for all of our press releases and departmental updates, whatever you wish to receive right into your email inbox or your text messages. So please sign up. Tell your friends, family, neighbors. It's a great way to keep up on top of things.
Great. Thank you very much, Sarah. All right. At this time, we're running a few minutes late. I would like to open the public hearing, setting the water rates for Red Hook Water District Number 1. And Sue, do you have a public notice?
I do. Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on January 8th, 2019, at 7:35 p.m. local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons on proposed modifications of the water rates and charges toward a district number 1. The Red Hook Water Board has recommended modification of the water rates and charges to increase the minimum rate from $40.70 to $42.74 for up to 9,000 gallons, and from $495 to $5.20 for 1,000 gallons of over 9,000, as further set forth in the schedule on file to the Town Clerk. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made with persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, E457584606, so that arrangements can be made. Please take further notice that a copy of the proposed schedule of water rates is available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, by order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated December 11th, 2018, Sue McCann Town Clerk, the Town of Red Hook.
Very good. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this matter? Okay, very good. We had some of this information at the last meeting, but for the folks at home, with the proposed change in the water rates, we would like to make you aware of how these rates in the Town's Water District Number 1 compare with neighboring municipalities. And you see that it compares very favorably. Okay, hearing no public comments. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Very good. Well, the first order of business. Thank you, Hank. Yes, Hank, thank you for your stewardship, as always.
Thank you all for your support for running a great water board and water department for us, reliable service, and obviously the numbers demonstrate at an affordable rate. So we greatly appreciate all the work that you and your board do. We are now on to agenda item number 1. And we would like to congratulate Judge Martin on his successful election to family court, Dutchess County Family Court. And we wish him the best. It's a sort of mixed blessing for us. He gets to move on to something new, but we will miss him. We are very happy, however, to have made a decision on an appointment to that vacancy. And we had several, I should tell you. We had quite a number of candidates interested, many of which would have done a terrific job at this position. However, Tom Mansfield checked all the boxes for us, and many of us know his good work over the years. And so we're very pleased tonight to have Tom with us because we are going to entertain a resolution authorizing his appointment to the position of Town Justice. And Tom, if it's okay if we do that resolution, then maybe we can make you do a swearing-in, if that's all right?
Sure.
Very good. All right, this is resolution number?
One.
Of 2019. Authorizing the appointment of Tom Mansfield to position of Town Justice. Whereas the Town of Red Hook Town Board is authorized pursuant to Section 64 of the town law to appoint a qualified person to the position of Town Justice to temporarily fill the vacancy created by resignation. Now therefore, hereby resolved by the Town of Red Hook as follows. Tom Mansfield is hereby appointed to the position of Town Justice to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Justice Martin for a term ending December 31st, 2019. This resolution shall take effect immediately. And I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Christine?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion?
Maybe we could just say that we did take this very seriously, and we went through an extensive interview process and really put a lot of thought into it. I just want people to know that because I think sometimes people out there sort of think that the stakes are small, it's like a small-town court, you know, but we take this responsibility very seriously, and especially to appoint somebody into a position that's not only an elected one. So we just want you to know that we put a lot of thought into it and discussion, and the interview process was taken very seriously.
Yeah. Okay. And thanks again to Christine Kane for contributing all the interviews and the write-ups on the candidates.
That's great.
All right.
Just like to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Congratulations, Tom.
Thanks.
Okay, we have with us the very distinguished Judge Treiblaser, who is here to do the swearing-in.
Thank you supervisor and members of the board. I'm going to ask Miriam to put the robes on.
Mr. Tom? Okay, where is it?
Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Thomas Mansfield.
I, Thomas Mansfield.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of the Justice of the Town of Red Hook.
Of the office of the Justice of the Town of Red Hook.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Tom. Watch carefully. Very good. Well, it goes without saying that this is the one time you want to see Judge Mansfield.
We also do 40 all-day for jury duty.
Oh, you do?
We do weddings.
You do?
We have funny aspects of our court.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Jono.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, very good. We have a second public hearing this evening. It's on the proposed fire protection district service agreements. We have two agreements. One with the Red Hook Fire Company, and one with the Village of Tivoli. And we have a public notice, Sue?
Yes, I'm sorry. That's okay. Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a concurrent public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on January 8th, 2019, at 7:50 p.m. local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons regarding a proposed fire protection district fire service agreement between the Town of Red Hook and the Village of Tivoli for 2019 and 2020, and to hear all interested persons regarding a proposed fire protection district fire service agreement between the Town of Red Hook and the Village of Red Hook and the Red Hook Fire Company for 2019 and 2020. Both agreements relate to the existing Red Hook Fire Protection District embracing the territory outside of the villages of Red Hook and Tivoli. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, E457584606, so that arrangements can be made. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed agreement are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated December 11th, 2018, Sue McCann Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Sue. This time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak on this issue? Okay. I would like to draw your attention to one minor change in the Village of Tivoli contract. The village has asked us to keep the contract amount the same, but to change slightly the allocation. And so in the Tivoli contract, we have proposed change for a LOSAF amount of $77.40. And $15,260 for capital costs. Capital expenses, I think.
It's already in here.
Right, it's already in here. And this is a change that's been added to the draft and due this evening at the request of Tivoli. I think you received that communication. The dollar amount stays the same. Okay. At this time, if there's no comments from the public this public hearing, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay. We can go ahead if you'd like and skip to item number 4, which is approve these fire protection district contracts. And I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, we have a resolution approving 2019 reorganization, and that's a reorg resolution that does not include our boards and committees. That does include meetings, official newspaper depositories, salaries of elected officials, mileage reimbursement, undertaking, procurement, financial reports. We have two policies as part of this resolution that we are going to reaffirm. One is procurement, and the other is investment policy. We'll be taking a look at the fund balance policy at our next meeting to see if we want to tweak that a little bit. This would be resolution number 3 of 2019.
So proposed is just to continue the policies as they were adopted previously?
Previously. Yeah? Any questions about the reorg resolution? Okay, if not, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay. On item number 3, to approve the change in the water rates.
Can I just ask the Town Board, when we do start on appointments, if everybody can try to check with the committees in advance so we don't have to piece it all together like we do? I'd appreciate it.
All right. Item number 3 is a resolution approving the 2019 rates for Red Hook Water District, and that would be resolution number 4. And I would so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have a presentation this evening regarding a topic perhaps whose time has come. It's community choice aggregation. And this is something that some of us have been going to meetings about for the last few years, and now there's some enabling legislation and some market forces that may make this something that we want to consider going forward. And so we have with us Glenn and Jeff. And do you want to come up? And I will try to get your presentation up on the screen and say quick hello to the folks.
Have it here too, if that's useful.
No worries, no worries. I'm sure we've got it. There we go. I will be your page-turner for tonight.
Okay. And hopefully it'll look, sometimes it gets a little wonky when it converts, but so I'll let you know if you're seeing something that shouldn't be. So first of all, thank you to supervisor and to the Town Board for having us in. I'm Glenn Weinberg from Jewel Assets. We're a community choice aggregator and clean energy, energy efficiency company located in Westchester County. With me is Jeff Demansky. He's the director of Hudson Valley Energy, which is the local nonprofit, which is spearheading this effort in the Hudson Valley, which is currently a group of six communities. Although we actually just came from Clinton, who passed the local law tonight just about a half an hour ago. So we may be growing from there. But it's a group of six communities. I'll talk a little bit more about the Renewable Highlands Program, as it's being called, which is a CCA, a community choice aggregation, that is a group of communities that are all hoping to pool their collective demand to get a better deal on electricity, on electricity rates, as well as to procure clean energy, a 100% New York State clean energy product. And I'll talk more about how that works, so we can move ahead. So just a bit about us, our two organizations. First, Jewel Assets was founded in 2010, and it was founded by two pioneers of the energy industry that had founded the first two companies in the U.S. that focused on what's called demand response. And I won't bore you with the energy market technical gory details of what demand response is. But they sort of found each other, and they realized that they both found a similar gap in the marketplace, which was that, which really had to do with access, equitable access, particularly for small customers, like residential and small commercial customers. In the various energy markets, which are going on and have been going on for decades, and quite large users like hospitals and large commercial outfits and industrial consumers have been taken advantage of for quite some time, but residential consumers have been excluded from these same sort of benefits. So they founded Jewel really with that mission in mind. And Jewel Community Power is a business unit of Jewel which focuses on community choice aggregation and various related initiatives to community choice aggregation. In short, In short, we help New York communities, cities, towns, and villages both set and meet clean energy goals. So I'll talk a little bit more about kind of our experience, but I'll sort of leave it there for now. We can move on. And Hudson Valley Energy, which is Jeff's organization, maybe I'll speak for you for a moment unless you. Jeff's been a sustainability warrior, I think that's the term I like to use, for quite some time, for decades. I don't know how long, Jeff.
Been a professional for 20 odd years in sustainability for more than 10.
Yeah, and really focused on the Hudson Valley region and on services for municipalities specifically. So, and he's, we partnered with Jeff and Hudson Valley Energy in really a 50/50 partnership. Hudson Valley Energy really is the local operation, really the local customer and municipal support partner in this partnership. And Jewel really concentrates mostly on the technical details, on the interface with utilities and regulators and suppliers, et cetera, on more the energy market and policy side, and together it's a really powerful partnership. Because community choice aggregation programs really rest on two foundational sort of pillars. One is the ability to leverage the collective demand and to take it out into the energy markets in a way that creates consumer benefit and a way that shifts the demand in the marketplace, in our view, towards clean energy. And the second is really the community outreach and support function. These programs thrive, live or die, on their ability to be a trusted source for energy education and for customer support within the communities. So with those two, those two hands of the partnership in mind, we found each other and have launched this program or in the process of launching this program. And I think we can probably move on. So a couple of components to this, to this program. And the first is really around what can we do as communities to meet clean energy goals? We hear quite a lot about the state's clean energy goals or clean energy policy at the national level or even at the international global level, but we don't often think about and concentrate on what we can do as communities. Now, I know Red Hook has been quite active, but for the most part, we tend to hear a lot of discussion about, for instance, the state's 50% by 2030 clean energy goal, or actually Cuomo has now upped the ante and set a goal of 100% by 2045, I believe it is. But really the ones, the stakeholders that are driving the success of those goals are the local communities. And New York State has really set the policy gears in motion through community choice aggregation and related policies for the cities, towns, and villages of New York State to really be in the driver's seat for that transformation. So with that, first of all, our goal as a firm is to help communities set, again, set and both, both set and reach a 100% clean electricity supply goal. So to be clear, that's not the same saying 100% carbon-free energy. For instance, for that to be realized, everybody in town would have to drive in electric cars and the like down. So this is just focused on energy supply, so I just wanted to distinguish that. And this is a map, this is a Sierra Club map and a Sierra Club program, where communities around the country are taking a 100%, setting a 100% clean energy or clean electricity goal. To date, or at least at the date of this, the publishing of this map, there are 83 such communities, and only two in New York. You'll see on the east end of Long Island, East Hampton and Southampton. Since then, Kingston has taken this pledge, the same, set the same goal. But this is really a growing movement, but it's a burgeoning movement. It's a new nascent movement. So Red Hook can really be at the forefront of what is a sort of new way of thinking about community and municipal action. And this is our way of thinking, this is, I'm not going to go through this whole slide, of course, but this is really a summary slide of how we think about getting there. So we think about four main goals. We think about divestment from fossil fuels, and obviously the flip side of that coin is if you're going to divest from fossil fuels, you're going to reinvest or invest in clean energy and particularly local clean energy development. And then two forms of efficiency, efficiency at the building level, right? So the sorts of upgrades and retrofits that you can do in a building like this to make it more energy efficient. And then efficiency at the system level, which has really been a core focus of our firm since founding. And that includes various steps that communities can take, both behaviorally and through technology, to actually manage their consumption at critical times. I highlighted in red, if you can distinguish there on the right-hand side. So we have those, we have those goals, we have the community actions, the ways that, the ways that communities can address those goals. And then the tools, including policy and other sorts of tools, that they can enact or implement to help them get there. Today, I'm going to focus on just three of those. So the first is 100% clean energy CCA supply contract. I'll talk about what that means. The second being direct partnerships with clean, existing clean energy generators, like solar asset owners and hydro asset owners. And third is partnerships with what is called community distributed generation developers or sponsors. And that's, I think that might be the next slide, so I'll unpack that, you know, three-letter acronym. The energy industry is famous for our three-letter acronym, so I'll unpack that CDG, I think and believe in the next slide or two, so we can skip ahead now.
Glenn, just so you know, we have a CDG project, so we're all familiar with CDG.
Great, okay. So I'm not speaking total Greek here when I say CDG. But in case there is confusion, especially for the viewing audience, you'll often hear it referred to as community solar, solar farms, solar gardens, or community distributed generation. They're really all synonyms for the same thing. And it's not just solar. You usually will see solar, and New York is similar to the rest of the nation in that the vast majority of these proposed projects are in fact solar, but it's not limited to solar. And in fact, there are three community wind resources right here in the Hudson Valley, and that's actually a growing opportunity for existing, excuse me, community hydro resources. And that's a growing opportunity for existing hydro resources throughout the state to actually convert to community renewables as a way of getting, basically for getting a better price for their power. And wind and farm waste anaerobic digesters are also similarly available for the same, eligible for the same benefit. So in order to, in order to spur that action, you need to actually take the local authority to do so, so we can move ahead. And this is, now we're getting to the key tool that I want to focus on today, which is community choice aggregation. So first of all, community choice aggregation is a municipal policy only for cities, towns, and villages in New York State. And New York is the seventh state to operationalize a CCA program. But in New York State, only cities, towns, and villages are eligible. And it is an authority to select or to reselect the default energy supply for residential and small commercial accounts, electric accounts and gas throughout the municipality. So right now, the state mandates that whoever your monopoly distribution utility is, in this case, Central Hudson, will also be the default supplier. So when you move into town, you set up your account, right? Central Hudson is your utility. They deliver you your energy. They're also your default supplier. But the supply side of your bill, your bill is actually both supply and delivery. The supply side of your bill is a competitive market and has been for about 20 years in New York State. So there are actually 75 or 80 registered companies in New York State that will compete for your business to supply you with energy. That means they're doing the buying with the generators and on the wholesale markets, not Central Hudson. So you'll still get your bill from Central Hudson. Central Hudson will still repair the grid when there are outages, or they will answer your questions about billing. They will service your meter and come and read your meter. But your supply, you'll be purchasing your supply from somewhere else. So what CCA does is it localizes the authority to decide where that supply comes from. So really this started, CCA started in Massachusetts about 20 years ago as a way to combat price volatility, market volatility, as a way to fix rates. But in that last 20 years, the concept of CCA has really evolved as a way for local governments to localize the decision-making around the source of their electricity, more specifically to source clean energy by using CCA as a policy tool. And that's how we, that's the principle behind our program. So how does it work? It's leveraging the collective purchasing power of all of those residential and small commercial accounts in town and in the surrounding municipalities that are participating to go out into the marketplace and to solicit the marketplace for a better deal for clean energy. So really beyond just simply price and source, really the key benefit of CCA is consumer protection. So I'll talk in a moment about Westchester County, where we piloted this, for the first, the first program in the state in just a moment. But in that case, we had 20 municipalities, that program is now up to 25 municipalities. We had 20 municipalities all revise and collaborate on one central consumer protective contract. So we have this vetted, deeply vetted contract that at every pass has stricken anything that could possibly be a potential risk for the community or for the consumer. And we basically handed that contract to the market through an RFP and said, "Take it or leave it." And we got, we still got really aggressive bidding, well under where our benchmarks were, our pricing benchmarks were. And the reason we could do that is by leveraging that collective purchasing power. Expectations, around 5% to 10% savings on electricity supply by leveraging that purchasing power. The Westchester case has been on the high end of that, of that range, and our expectation for Central Hudson is that we'll be somewhere in the middle of that range, 78% against the historical benchmark. So as I mentioned, we can go through this quickly. As I mentioned, you'll see the green states, that's where CCA is active. New York is the seventh state, several more states around the country that are looking at CCA, including probably most prominently Virginia, which will come on in 2019. But it's a growing state policy at the state level, but it really is a local policy at heart. So as I mentioned, the first New York's CCA program in Westchester County launched two and a half, now more than that, years ago with about 100,000 accounts. It's now up to about 125,000 accounts in 25 municipalities in Westchester County, so that map is a little bit out of date. And 24 of the 25 of those communities have set a 100% New York State clean energy product as the default. So over 95% of those 120,000 accounts are purchasing a 100% clean energy product. So where do we take that? We started that. They've seen about $15 million in savings in Westchester County since the program inception in 2016. And how do you build on that first step? It was the largest clean energy purchase in New York State history, and it still is, so where do you go from there? So what we've been spending the last two years doing really is developing the local development component of that program. So CCA typically starts as a bulk purchasing program, but we knew we had to get to local incentivizing and the development of local clean energy resources. So we can skip ahead. So we set to work on that, and in March of 2018, we got the first of its kind regulatory approval for a CCA program that is able to integrate these local CDG, the credits generated by these local CDG or community solar projects into the CCA supply portfolio as a default component of the CCA supply portfolio, which is a precedent-setting authority that we were granted in March of last year. And that was really rested on equity of access, guaranteed savings, consumer protection, and local opportunities at the town municipal level for both revenue and ownership, community ownership opportunities. Those are the principles that we founded that proposal on, which was approved, as I said, again, in March of last year. So you can skip down to this. So what can you expect? The savings from the CCA component, that is, the savings from the, on the supply part of that bill, are fairly modest. In this region, in the Hudson Valley region, a seven or eight percent discount will be about 40 to 50 bucks a year. Okay? So not break the bank sort of savings. But community solar subscription is double that, 90 or $100 a year in savings. And a smart thermostat program that Jewel runs, which is a way of essentially taking that same aggregation concept and playing in a different market, in a demand-side market, is another $40 a year estimated in savings per household. So when you add all of those together, now you're at $175, $200, and that's a fairly conservative estimate. And that's real savings. And we, as the aggregator or the administrator of the program, we're only compensated by a portion of the value that we create. There's no upfront fees, consulting fees, or any charges from the municipality to us as the administrator. And there's no commitment to move ahead with any contracts until we deliver a contract that meets the criteria that you set through a community engagement process. So we can move ahead now and talk a little bit about, and it got a little wonky there, but I can read you what's under there. The program, as I mentioned, that we are launching in the first part of this year, 2019, and you see yellow, that yellow geometric object right there in the Hudson Valley, that's Central Hudson Gas and Electric Territory. So all of the communities we're working with for this aggregation group sit in that territory. To date, this group includes the City of Poughkeepsie, the City of Beacon, the Town of Fish Hill, the Town of Phillips Town, the Village of Cold Spring, and the Town of Marble Town. And as I mentioned, the Town of Clinton passed the local law tonight, and we're hoping they'll be joining that program shortly. We expect to launch in the second quarter of this year. And we have been getting indicative feedback and pricing from the suppliers, potential suppliers, on the clean energy product, and so far the indicative pricing looks really good, and it looks like we'll be able to perform similarly to how we performed in the market in Westchester County in 2016. So this is just a, I don't intend to read this, of course. This is just a sort of summary of what we've been up to around the area. And coming up as well for folks, any, these are all public events. You're welcome to join, anybody at home that's reading this. So we've been around quite a bit in the fall and the start of this winter, and will continue to be around our participating communities as well as prospective communities throughout the January and February and beyond. Really outreach never ends for these types of programs. They're just sort of perpetual. And Jeff's been holding his office hours, as you see there, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, every night and every morning in a different city for Jeff. He's posting up there in the Town Hall or in the rec center, community center, and just any walker, you know, any passersby, any incoming folks can come in and ask questions and talk to Jeff about the program. So this, the way that, the way that we create this 100% renewable product is really a sort of portfolio approach. I might have mentioned that earlier. The first really, the first key pillar to that is partnerships with CDG developers. So we have deals with the developers to access their projects, that they, that, most of which are not yet built. Some of which are built but are not yet plugged into the grid and at various stages of development. And the developers offer us a special discounted rate for our CCA customers. And we have specified various terms in terms of credit, no credit checks and a very streamlined contract that have been accepted by the market, so that we can offer a really consumer, in line with the rest of the CCA program, that our CDG offer is equally consumer protective. And these subscriptions offer guaranteed savings, 10% against the utility bill. And they do so, as you guys know, in the form of bill credits. So you get money off your utility bill, and then you get a second bill in the mail for 90% of the amount that you saved off your utility bill. So that's where you get your 10% discount. So that's where you get your ten percent discount. So you get an allocated portion of that solar project and you pay ninety percent of the value for it. And as I mentioned, this goes beyond community solar, uh, to community hydro. This is a picture of the Woffenden Falls Hydro Plant, great little plant, you never even know it was there. It's been around for decades and decades of true sort of mom and pop hydro uh, facility. And the real shame in New York State is that the hydro facilities are struggling to make ends meet and many of which are, are closing their doors. They just simply can't get a fair price for their power anymore the way they used to twenty or thirty years ago. And so CCA is a natural partner for these existing resources because our communities want clean energy and they have it. Um, this, uh, as I mentioned, we, we also uh, um, in conjunction with our CCA program, we operate a, a, a dynamic demand management uh, program through smart thermostats. I won't spend too much time tonight on this, if there are questions about it, please feel free to ask. But uh, this is an additional sort of uh, um, um, opt-in voluntary enrollment program that we offer through the CCA program, okay? So next steps at the municipal level, you can, you can skip ahead. First is, and you may have, uh, if, if you've been uh, educating uh, on this program as you have for the last few years, you know that the way that you authorize this at the municipal level is to approve a local law. Um, it is purely enabling legislation, it does not commit the municipality to any contracts or to anything. In fact, it just establishes the home rule authority to explore CCA and to implement CCA should you choose to. Um, okay, next step is to select an administrator, right? Jewel and Hudson Valley Energy are the administrator that has this group here in Central Hudson. We are not the only administrator um, the, the, out there in New York State. Um, but we uh, we are unique, quite unique in the partnership structure that we've created here where there is truly a local uh, presence and a local uh, um, operation that serves the community and serves the program on a daily basis uh, through contract signing and through uh, uh, implementation for the duration of the program. Um, so that's quite unique. Jewel serves in the administrator role, which is the Public Service Commission defined role as the municipal representative. Hudson Valley Energy serves in the local organizer role and we split the fees fifty-fifty. So the fees come as a, on a per kilowatt, kilowatt hour basis, they're paid to us by the suppliers. So not by the municipality and not directly from the consumer, by the suppliers. So there's no financial obligation or custody for the municipality whatsoever. Um, and selecting an administrator doesn't, does not commit the town to CCA. It simply protects the work that we do for free or sort of uh, speculatively. And if there is a contract, if we are able to deliver a contract that meets with your criteria, then that, that service agreement says that we'll be the administrator for that and we're entitled to those fees. But up until that decision point, right, you're not committing to anything, you're, we're simply protecting the work that we do. Um, and then after that uh, administrator is selected, if it's us, you will be filed in our approved implementation plan um, at the state level and you will uh, uh, you know, participate in our program. And then we will go out and test the market for you in terms of identifying available supply. Clean energy, we've of course already been doing this, deeply engaged in the marketplace for, for a couple of years now. Um, but the town would then get the benefit of that work that we've been doing. We'd identify the available resources and pricing and develop a set of criteria with you, along with you, and a contract with you and your council. And if we're able to find a product that meets with your criteria, then you'd move forward. Uh, and obviously the municipality has final authority on what those criteria ought to be and what that contract looks like. Uh, so I'll leave it there and if there are questions, happy to, to stay and answer.
Thank you very much, Colin, appreciate it. Um, and we have um, received some sample draft legislation and uh, service agreement. So we have stuff to consider, which, which we will. Does anybody have any questions about uh, CCA? For now. We can reach uh, either you or Jeff at the contact information with our questions. I think we, we kind of understand it, it sounds um, really kind of terrific, the opportunity to use purchasing power for our residents to save money and to transition very easily to clean energy. Um, and at the same time allow them flexibility if for some reason they wanted to opt out, and so just opt out.
Yeah, this is, and I, 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 uh, this brings up an important point. Uh, this is a free opt-out program as the supervisor mentions, which means that it does become the default energy supply. That means that people are, are automatically moved into the program. But they are able to freely opt out or leave the program at any time with no penalty whatsoever and it's rather easy to do so.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation, Colin, we appreciate it. Jeff, thank you very much for coming. Um, Dennis and, and the folks at the CAC have attended meetings over the last couple of years on CCA. Um, it's been very helpful, so.
Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you, Colin. We're going to uh, move on now to um, item number six. Um, as you know, we've been working with Cornell Cooperative Extension and Michelle Block in particular. Um, one of the things we have not done is to uh, up a climate smart community, although we are a clean energy community. And one of the technical things that we need to do is to constitute a task force. And the CAC has been kind enough to shepherd that, and Lori Usted has been kind enough to step up and be a uh, the head of that task force. And so we have a resolution, which would be resolution number.
Five.
Uh, as you're ready, for two thousand nineteen. And this is to establish a community that are climate, smart community task force. An ISO move.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, thank you very much. And for the folks at home, this designation um, has some implications in that we could apply for additional grant monies. And as you, if you've been watching these meetings, you know, we try to take advantage of every opportunity if we can to apply for grant monies for our, for our projects.
Yeah, and I'm just throwing that, um, thanks especially to Jen Kavanaugh and um, Laura Huestead who have worked with Michelle on this. And so far, this has come to us basically free in terms of any taxpayer money or anything like that. Cornell Cooperative Extension did this work for us, kind of just basically coordinating what we've already done into the checklist. So it's just nice to see all those different things we've done over the years all listed out. Feels really good to see how productive we've been and it's exciting to see us move forward.
A lot of questions involved with that. Very good, um, that's number six. We're moving on to number seven with, which is a resolution approving the revised schedule of planning board fees. We wanted a little bit more detail from the planning board on a couple of the fees and so we have that. Um, so if you have this updated schedule and a resolution now would be resolution number six of two thousand nineteen, a resolution approving revised schedule of planning board fees, an ISO move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Um, maybe we should just, does anybody have any discussion? We haven't really talked about this in a meeting.
Right. I assume we did, we did it at a previous meeting, yeah.
Did we? I thought we only talked about it in the executive session.
I missed the meeting, right?
You missed that.
This was discussed, I'm assuming, at Greenley with the planning board.
Yes, these are, these are their recommendations and they've worked with uh, their attorney and our attorney.
And I attended two of their meetings to review them.
Maybe Christine, maybe you could just talk about like the purpose of this revision, just so that we can. I don't remember discussing it out in public and I think it's just good to like explain why we're considering things.
Sure, well, um, the, it has to do with how long it takes to review things and how the process is set up and a, and a better way to help applicants understand um, what the costs for their program would be, both in, for their project, rather, both in the beginning when they have to pay the various fees and also in terms of escrow as the project progresses. And so how that escrow would be determined and um, more regularly reviewed as the project progresses. So again, there's no big surprises for any either side of the project. That's kind of it in a nutshell. And so the planning board did some research on um, what the average cost of certain types, certain categories of, of projects is um, to base the suggestions of the revised fees upon.
This does not address the, the legal fees associated with it, right?
Well, depends on what you define as legal fees. It does, there, it defines escrow.
Yeah.
And some projects would require that there are, that some legal reviews as part of the project and then that would be involved and figured out in the escrow.
Right, your escrow account can cover, Harry, your escrow account can cover any of engineering, planning and legal fees.
I know that, but, but the, eventually it turns into a cost. The, the escrow, the escrow account is the, is the applicant's money until, until they, they pay for legal fees or whatever, whatever fees, planning fees or whatever. Uh, but it's a cost of the project and, 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 and I'm, I'm not suggesting anything more than, than it being, being uh, it being an upfront prediction of what will be the cost of their project.
Well, it's, yes, but.
So, so if you look at these numbers, it'll, it'll tell you that, that a certain action is likely to cost X. But these numbers do not in any way uh, address the legal fees which come off, come out of the, come out of the wings.
No, I don't understand what you mean, Harry. I think, I think the effort that the planning board undertook was to try to look at generally for projects, if they have, for example, a special permit for a lot line or a lot line alteration. Um, they were looking for an initial deposit on average of a thousand dollars at a minimum. But if a project presented in the application was reviewed by the planning board and determined, you know, based on that initial preliminary application meeting to be much more complex, they might set a bigger escrow at the beginning because they might anticipate um, you know, particular issues that are expected to arise and require um, particular evaluation. For example, if a project had a specific drainage plan that was going to be relatively complex and need, you know, more significant engineering review, they might set a higher escrow to begin with.
And I fully understand that. But, but this does not, this does not in any way say applicant, yeah, these are the fees that go to the planning board. But, but there, the, there, there may be substantial additional fees that, um, that are, that are spent on, 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 on the planner or, or, or legal advice to the planning board. So that are not included in these fees, that, that's all I'm, that's all I'm.
They, they actually are included in the fee.
So, so I think we're just, let me just clarify, there, there are fees in this, in this thing, but there are also estimated escrows, minimum escrows, which are set aside to pay those costs as they arise.
Right.
Okay, so there's two different things in here. The fees, which you're talking about, which are relatively modest and they go to pay administrative costs at the town.
Yeah.
And the, the escrow, which is set up to cover specific, project-specific costs out of pocket that the town will incur for these projects, okay?
And, and it's an, it's an estimate.
Right, yeah.
And I just feel as though it should be listed as an estimate in, 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 in that kind of stick context.
Well, I think the, the language does, on page three, should reflect that, that the chair will periodically review the required amount of the project escrow. Obviously, as applications come in and, and get revised, you know, their ability to conform to the regulations during the revisions might have an impact on the cost associated with um, project review. But I think the language there does sort of.
I'm, I'm just wondering whether it's adequate, I, I just know that that's, that's kind of complaint, one of the complaints I hear regularly.
Yeah, I think anything that we can do to make it more clear for, for people, um, what it is getting into before they start would be good.
Well, it does say right here that, you know, as Chris was mentioning, that the chair is going to periodically review the required amount. And should the amount remaining available for escrow expenditures be less than the amount required, the applicant will be advised that additional monies must be deposited before review will continue. Any unexpected funds at the conclusion of the application process after accounting for any outstanding costs and fees will be returned to the applicant. So, I mean, I think that's pretty clear that.
Well, it's clear as you go along, it could be more costs. But not what the actual cost will be.
You won't know what the actual cost is, so.
I know, I'm saying, anything we can do to try to make that clear or, for people, you know, is helpful.
That's all I'm, well, I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting is that you keep in mind that, that, that if people are blindsided, rather people like.
Well, there's.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And it, it's very personal, you know, and, and, and I, I know, I realize it, it's not, it's not a simple thing. But it, I think it's uh, important to try and keep people up to date where they're, where they're at financially.
Right, well, I hope.
And, and time as well. People complain, you know, and there's a, there's a meeting a month and, and then it takes six meetings and I can only get on, on the agenda in every, every other one. So people complain about how long it takes, you know, which is, which is another issue.
Well, it was actually two meetings a month and, but a lot of times, uh, you know, in the planning board's defense, you cannot schedule applicants if they don't have the next round of materials ready, so.
I am, I am aware, I'm aware, it, it's a complex process. And, and I, I just think it'd be wise that we work somehow on, 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 on making it smoother. I mean, one of the things that I've thought of is expensive, uh, really, and that we, we should have, could have a planner on, on board here have a half day a week that people could come in and, and talk to, as a, have, for, for advice.
Well, we do encourage, Harry, uh, folks to come in initially before they go ahead and do work, which may be expensive on a project, to come in and meet with our building department and then if they'd like, I mean, we can't fund it, but they could spend an hour with our planning consultant and see if they're on the right train, headed down the right track. So they can avoid, you know, some of those uh, costs that may not.
Maybe, maybe you can do a little more than that.
Yeah. Well, I think this is an improvement, it sets um, you know, has greater detail and sets expectations perhaps a little better for the future. Shall we entertain a, a resolution to approve?
I think we did that, right?
Well, we're discussing before voting.
Yeah, this is the discussion before voting.
Yeah, you didn't vote.
This is, this is the discussion, that's why I'm wondering.
Shall we go ahead and advance this?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just pointing, pointing out, pointing out it's a, it's a, it's, it's a, a work in progress on a long-term basis, I think.
Always, always, well, one of the best, one of the best things we can do in Ireland, which we certainly have worked on is zoning. The more you can articulate what you want or what's allowable and desirable, uh, the more it helps out everyone, especially developers and folks wanting to um, you know, utilize their properties. Okay, so we had a motion, we had a second, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item of business is our two eighty-four agreement, a resolution to approve highway expenditures. And um, our highway superintendent has, has prepared what we'll call a draft two eighty-four agreement. As you know, Teresa has stood about coming back to us for amended two eighty fours when um, you know, conditions warrant to work on um, different projects for, for um, you know, certain segments of roadways. And so we have um, this two eighty-four agreement, which is for general fares of fifty thousand dollars and for a budgeted amount of permanent improvements, which I think it has up to two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Um, the work that's listed here, at least in this first draft, would be Echo Valley Road, Middle Road, Rockefeller Lane. And we should, you know, certainly if we have any thoughts about Echo Valley Road and doing something different, we would certainly want to get, get that. And we should, you know, certainly if we have any thoughts about Echo Valley Road and doing something different, we would certainly want to get, get that discussion with, with you.
Well, this is not really a draft. This is the requested document for the 284 agreement. These are the projects that I have chosen, based on the discussion that we had in July. And since no one had reached out to me and said, you know, I have a problem with this, I figured that we had put this one to bed.
Okay.
Any of the additional work that you wanted to do can be done after the paving.
Okay.
So I would like this to be the 284 agreement. Initially, I had brought a blanket 284 agreement, as we had done in previous years, but I was asked to be specific. So these are the projects that I've chosen. The only way they're going to change is if there's some kind of a weather event that will affect another road that would take priority over these. So I would say that these are the projects that I've chosen for 2019.
Okay, very good. Any, any thoughts before we entertain this resolution to approve the 284 agreement?
I just have a quick question on the Echo Valley Road.
Sure.
With the study that was done a few months ago with, and some of the possible recommendations that came out of that. So would this project preclude any of them? Or if we move ahead, would it require, you know, undoing some of this pavement to put some of those?
The only thing it would preclude was the reconstruction of the total road, which was an eighty thousand dollar addition to the project. And as the budget was not increased by that and the residents actually were not encouraging that reconstruction. According to the surveys that I had done, that would be the only thing that would change. So the actual paving of the road could happen. And then if you decided as a board to do the chip seal showing or the striping, there's still money in the budget for that.
Okay, and so that could happen in addition?
It has to happen after the paving anyway.
Okay, so just want to be sure.
So what I would do is, we're asking the county to do a traffic count prior to the paving. And then we're going to have them come back and do a traffic count, which is also a speed study after the paving. And then you can see if there's an increase in speed, which was the fear for paving the road at this width. And if there is, and you think there's a concern, you could do the other alternates. But I only got one resident reply in a letter and they felt that the road was fine as it is. And that if you started doing these alternates on Echo Valley Road, you'd open yourself up to having to do them on all the town roads, which could get expensive for the taxpayers.
So just to be clear, the width that's listed here is basically you're repaving it as it is?
Yep.
Right, it doesn't represent.
And it goes from eighteen to twenty-six to twenty-four, it's not a, yeah, it's not. We are not going any wider.
Yeah.
We'll do our best to narrow it where we can without ripping up the drainage and, you know, going into a major project. Which will take away funding from the other roads, as you saw in the additional document that I gave you. Where, where a need of that additional funding.
I'm concerned about, about, we really neglected the secondary roads like Aspen Wall is a wreck and Manor Road is a wreck. And they're getting worse. I know it's funny, I realize that, but, and, and, but we, we do at some point have to address it. Till the cracks get, cracks get so wide that you lose a tire inside.
Well, and what we do is, we have a patch and a materials budget line. And if there's anything left, we go out and we do major patching. So if it's falling apart.
Aspen Wall has patches on patches on patches.
Right, but.
Multicolored ones and.
You know, that's, that's what we're dealing with. Bless you.
I am aware, it's a, aware it's a function of mine, my, my priority.
So, so Harry, are you suggesting that maybe we should wait on one of these roads, like Echo Valley Road, do those instead?
No, no, I'm, I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting the, the next go around, we play, pay a bit more of attention to the, to, to some of the secondary roads. They, they've been low, low on the priority list and it's getting serious and, more and more serious.
Okay. Eric, anything else? If not, this is resolution number seven, dated January eighth, to approve highway expenditures. And I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Uh, thank you very much, Theresa.
Do we, we need to circulate a copy of the.
Two copies, yeah.
Two copies, yeah. I've got the original, here's the original.
Seals.
We'll do that. Just remember. Okay. So we have resolution number eight. The next item on the agenda is just to approve the RFP for shared court services. Both the town and village of Reinbeck and Red Hook Reinbeck, being the lead municipality. Are, were awarded grant to study combining court administration. With the idea that we might be able to not only save money, but provide a better service. And so we have a draft RFP. That is really based upon the RFP that Reinbeck issued. That has Red Hook specific information. And the idea is that we would release this at around the same time to at least open the possibility of having a firm do both studies at the same time. And present us with some options for consideration.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
On the attachment to the RFP, the agreement for professional services.
Yeah.
On page nine. I think there's just a typo at the top of the page. It says trails plan.
Is that on one of the contract pages? We can fix that.
Probably taken from a template.
Probably was.
Right. And the trails plan also share judicial courts. Thank you for catching that typo, but yeah. Okay, well, this is resolution number eight. And this, I think the county's going to coordinate the release of this RFP. So we should look for this to go out sometime later this month or early February. And I so move resolution number eight, authorizing the issuance of a request for proposals for judicial court services study. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a discussion on Freeborn Lane. We, we were approached by one of our favorite farmers, the Miglerelli, to discuss whether or not the town would be interested in abandoning Freeborn Lane. And we did agree to do some research work and to get some input, legal input and some planning input on that. And so a couple of things that we were able to ascertain. One is that that portion of Freeborn Lane is a user road, as I think we anticipated anyway, it's a user road. And we did solicit input from planners, from our planning consultant. And I can't speak for everyone else. I think the struggle, Kenny, for us is that when we make any decision, whether it's this decision or something else. We have to understand what the public purpose is. For, you know, sort of addressing your request. And I think we're struggling, I know I am, to understand what the public purpose would be. To go ahead and, and release this road. We, our understanding is the road, while it doesn't get used a lot, it does get used occasionally by perhaps another farmer, occasionally by folks walking on a portion of the road. And so I just leave it at that, that I can't find a public purpose for how the town would commit to abandoning the road. Right, and there are some, you know, ideas that the planning consultant had about, you know, future uses for the road, light uses for the road. But, um, anyone else want to chime in?
Can he get this memo?
I, I don't believe it.
Get the memo from the.
Probably get a memo.
Any reason why we can't copy the memo?
Okay, the issue on Manhattan is, the issue on Manhattan is the electric.
Right.
In the process of building a building on the one side, and Central Hudson is having an issue with how to run the electric. So, and that's why I want.
If it's a town road, it costs more if it's abandoned, it costs less, I guess.
Well, it's, I don't know. They won't make a decision unless they figure out who owns the road. So the town owns, you're saying the town?
Well, it's a town road, it's a user road, there isn't any question about that.
Okay, so.
So I can speak to a little bit of this process. When we were out there talking to the utilities early on, it's a user road and it's a gated road. And Central Hudson did not want to put their utility lines on a road where they could not access them. So that's where this process started.
Well, I, I think they need to be allowed to access the road, it's, it's a user road.
And it's not to town specs. So then you have to decide what you want to do in the future with that road. Do you want to rebuild it to town specs? Do you want to, you know, put it on the, the town roadway listing where it's not right now? So there's, there's a lot of gray areas there.
I don't think it's very great, Theresa, it's a user road. I mean, the gating was supposed to be temporary because of a dumping problem.
No, the gating had never been temporary.
The gating was supposed to be temporary when it was initiated.
Okay.
By the board. Because it was supposed to try to address the dumping problem.
Right.
Because there was a landfill there, which has been closed now for many, many years.
Yeah.
Twenty years.
And the dumping is still an issue when, when the gates are open. In the fall, when I open them to go to my storage up on County Route Six, we'll leave them open for, you know, a few weeks, maybe a month. You wouldn't believe how the garbage, people drive down and they start dumping garbage already. So it's, have you been down that road lately?
Yeah, well, not with the.
Okay, from, from, from the beginning of August to almost any year, we, I recorded forty inches of rain. Go look at what that road looks like right now. I couldn't imagine why the town would have to spend money to bring it up to town spec. So I don't understand, it's been, the gates have been there almost thirty years. It's, you know, people want to continue walking on it, it's, it's not an issue. I've already stated that, I got a letter from the village of Tibbely that they will have access to their, their property. And I also stated that a Northwood Farm would have access to get to last year road to the fields that they farm there. So I don't understand the issue of relinquishing ownership of the road. You know, I mean, if, if the town is, if, if people were really using the road, it would be a different thing. I live on a road, I see maybe one person walk maybe every week or every, you know, couple of weeks, so it's not.
And one of the aspects is that we don't maintain the road and have not maintained the road in quite some time. We don't plow it, we don't repair it, we don't braid it, we don't do anything to it. So if it were in fact to be a town road, it may have to be something like a seasonal road. That we don't maintain in the wintertime. Because in order to maintain it properly, you would have to rebuild the road.
Right.
And with all the rain we had, it's, right now it's a mess. For me to use it for what I'm going to use it for, I'm going to have to, I'm going to be the one repairing the road. So now, okay, here's something, you're going to leave it like that? I'm going to want the road repaired. Theresa's not going to want to repair that road the way it is. It's going to cost the town a lot of money that's unnecessary. So, so what's my course of action here? Do I need to get a lawyer to move this forward or, you know, or is the decision going to come from the board here? I don't, I don't, I don't understand that it's on a standstill like this.
I don't understand why you. In what respect would you expect to get a lawyer? What do you think they would do for you?
Well, I, I want to, I think the town should relinquish, I want to ship with the road.
Well, it sounds to me like they don't agree with you.
They haven't, they haven't maintained the road in thirty years, it's a mess. And I'm going to, I'm going to start using it quite, you know, frequently, so I'm going to want the road fixed. And it's going to cost you not a few thousand dollars, it's going to cost you hundreds of thousands of dollars that you, I don't think you need to spend.
So we don't have to fix it to a certain degree, right?
Well.
It opens up a whole.
Well, it's not disclosing, and I think that, you know, so disclosing it opened up a huge issue.
I, I'm not arguing one way or the other. I want to make that clear.
Well, it seems like you are, sorry.
I'm just, I'm just providing the facts of what I understand, what you, you can totally dispute that, and that's fine by me. I, I, I'm not trying to make any decision here at all.
But if you open it, you're going to have the, the garbage issue again, that happens, right? I couldn't, I can't believe how it starts in right away, that people start dumping, I, I end up cleaning it up. So I don't understand the problem with relinquishing ownership. Why would that be a problem? The town hasn't maintained it in thirty, almost thirty years.
Again, Kenny, it's, I think we're struggling with understanding what the public benefit is, there aren't.
There's no public benefit. Have a public hearing on it. Why don't you have a public hearing and then send it out to everybody who's within five hundred feet from the road? So they could come in and speak about why they want the road, whatever, I don't know what, you know, I don't know what they're going to say. But I say have a public hearing on the road. I mean, when you, when you have public hearings, it's on a piece of property, it's what, five hundred feet from the, from the property? So I'll pay to have everybody notified within five hundred feet of that road to have a public hearing that the road's going to be, that the town's going to relinquish ownership of the, between the gates.
Ken, this is not a stub road. You know, there, it's, it's, there are procedures for terminating a stub road where the town doesn't have an interest in connectivity between roads. You know, if you're at the end of a road and there isn't anybody else on the other side, there's an easier process for the town to consider, do we need to go through there? Yes or no, you know, this part doesn't need to reach anybody but the one person at the end. There's a process for terminating that. Sounds like that's what you're talking about. This is not a stub road. This is a road that connects two major roads. And one of the things the planner pointed out is it's, it's the only connection that connects two major roads. And whether or not it's used right now, it's a connectivity issue.
It hasn't been used in thirty years.
I hear that.
And now there's a dead end sign. You put a dead, dead end sign on the, on the West Curly Corners side, so it's a dead end road. There's a dead end sign on the, on the road now. So I say you have a public hearing and let the public decide. Okay, so you worry about the public, so have a public hearing. Everybody who lives within five hundred feet of that road, and then let the public decide.
Well, a couple of things, Kenny, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that the public should get to decide the opening and closing of a road. The public, the roads are open to the entire public. And when we have a public road, it's not for folks within five hundred feet. What I was speaking to is our fiduciary responsibility to make decisions that are in the public benefit.
Public's interest.
In the public's interest. And all I said to you is that I struggled. And I think it's fair to say others here too, struggle to find the public benefit of approving your request to abandoning that road.
Well, the benefit to the public would be their taxes wouldn't go up because they wouldn't have to maintain the road. So if you're talking about the immediate public near the road, because everybody else, you don't go down the road. Nobody on this board has any reason to go down the road. I mean, so the only people that would, it would affect is the people who live near the road.
Well, that's, that's, that's your opinion, Kenny, that's your opinion. There are people who utilize that road for walking and running and who don't live near there. I, I appreciate, I understand. But again, you know, if you have an issue with your utility and the cost associated with or the access for electric.
Well, listen, listen, listen.
Kenny, please. Kenny, please let me.
Central Hudson is not going to be, run electric because of the, of the situation here with the road.
Well, if there's anything that we can do to assist with your.
They're going to want you to maintain the road. And you should got, you guys should get out of your car and walk down that road after forty inches of rain the last six months.
I imagine so.
So I guess I got to get a lawyer to maybe move this along?
I, I don't, I don't know that we can, that's not really what.
You don't think so?
The advice you want.
Okay.
But thank you, thank you for the request. We did, we did do our research work, we did.
You don't worry, I don't know, I don't get it. And nobody else has anything to say. It's, it's, it sounds like it's all coming from you, okay?
It's not, Kenny.
You know, it's like.
Five people there. Well, no, Kenny, the, the idea of abandoning the road requires some kind of a public purpose for municipal elected officials to just abandon a road that connects two major roads in your town.
Yeah, but it's a road that's been abandoned for almost three years.
Yeah, well, maybe somebody's got to take another look at it or something. I don't know. There, there could be any number of circumstances.
You know, it's the common sense of it, it is.
But the bottom line, though, is that you cannot just easily abandon a road because it's garbage.
Okay, so let's go through the procedures and I'll pay for whatever, whatever it costs to.
Because it's unmaintained. You have to have a public benefit. And we can't find one. That's not what's been said. And the lawyers have looked at it, the planners have looked at it.
You asked us to look into it. We did look into it, Kenny.
On my part, I would say that, that I think you should read this. You can certainly boil it for it, or I think I can just hear from my copy if you want it.
We have your subscription.
There is an argument to be made about connectivity. I think we could talk about it for a year about how much connectivity there really is, what the benefit is. But there is that issue, and especially in emergency situations where trees might be down or other issues. But I hear you that in essence you feel as somebody who is on the road and has seen it be gated, that with no actual traffic on it, that to you it feels abandoned and it's not even maintained. Like I hear, I hear you saying that, right? And I think an issue for us is that we, if we went down the road from the pun of abandonment, we can't go back from that. You know, if we, if we decide to go down the road. So it's a very permanent solution that, that you propose. And the board, at least I can speak for myself, is just not ready to go to that permanent solution. So, but I hear you, personally, I'll just speak for myself. I hear you that it's an issue that we're sort of between two untethered situations. The board doesn't want to release the road, but you feel that it needs to be maintained or something needs to be going on there. If it's going to be a town road, does it need to be maintained to a certain standard? I mean, it sounds like we have more conversations to have about that. I'd certainly be interested to hear, and maybe we should go with it. If that, if this is the situation that we want to propose, which is that we don't want to abandon it, then it sounds like there are more conversations to be had about how it would be maintained in the future and.
Well, maybe we'll take the gates down and have it paved.
Well, I, I think I agree with Sarah. There has to be maybe a continuing effort here to have the town reanalyze that road, the history of it, where it is now, where it's going to go, and what we actually can do about it other than abandoning it. You know, that's, that's been the one rejection.
You know, if it was only, if the gates were only up for five years or ten, I could understand. But we're talking almost thirty years. And if there was not really a benefit to the township, that, that benefit would have come to surface.
You see, you'd have to put yourself in a position of, the people who put those gates up, was there reasoning that they were going to ban?
Yeah, because of the dumping.
Oh, no, was there reasoning that they were going to abandon the road? And why didn't they, you know? So I mean.
It was just, the initial, initial effect of putting the gates up was to stop the dumping.
Yeah, so.
And, but if the gates go down, nobody, nobody lives on that road. I mean, on, on the north end of the road. And nobody could ever live on the north end of the road. They, they can't develop, it's, it's swamp. You know, it used to be called Swamp Road, it used to be called Dump Road. So, you know, if there was houses along the north end, then I could, obviously, you wouldn't have the rates, then you wouldn't have the dumping because you'd have people watching. So, whatever.
Okay, more discussion for the future, it sounds like. I'm sure.
Sure, I'm going to see the legality of, of some angle to moving forward.
Okay.
But I'll get with Central Hudson, so.
Okay, if there's anything we could do to assist with that, please let us know.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
You know, from, from your point of view, is there anything between maintaining a town road and abandoning a town road? Is there some roads that are neither maintained nor abandoned, but somehow?
I think that that's something that the board will have to look into and consider. We don't have any seasonal roads or low maintenance roads in the town of Red Hook.
Seasonal roads, yeah.
So this would be a new situation.
About the road to Krueger's Island, that was never, that wouldn't have been the.
No, that's.
The, the most of that.
Probably the one that I thought.
Is, is there some state?
Some underwater, seeped underwater.
Is there some state waters?
There are things that need to be looked at by the town board as far as what the minimum maintenance is required and when. And.
Yes, I mean, if the board finds it would cost too much money to keep the road and maintain it, then maybe, you know, we might work around something other than abandonment.
There are, look, there are gravel roads, there are, you know, there are seasonal roads.
But not in a swamp.
There are gravel roads, there are seasonal roads, so there are other alternatives that the town can look at, so.
But not in a swamp.
Okay, well.
That, that road was put right through a swamp.
Thank you very much. That's item number ten. We're on to item number eleven, which is just simply for you to, if you would, between now and next meeting, our healthcare broker has sent us a, a a group of plans for us to study for twenty nineteen. And I've asked Ann for some information to give you as well to take a look at our budget and expenses and our utilization rate. And so for the July, July, the January twenty-third meeting, we, we want to make a decision on the plan. Because our sign up date is February first, when they want to come in here, and the plan year is March first. So it's just simply for you to take a look at those plan options and to work towards a decision at our next meeting. Okay, number twelve, we don't really have, I don't have any other correspondence. Does anybody else have? All right, very good. At this time, I would like to thank you all for joining us at our first meeting of twenty nineteen. Again, wishing you a healthy and happy twenty nineteen. Is there a public comment anybody would like to make before we entertain the most? You know, I'd like to make a motion that we go into attorney-client. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight, appreciate it.